Fade into board members seated at table. Jim Batson.
Good evening. I'd like to call the October 28th, 2024 regular board meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance if everyone would like to join.
Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone returns to their seats.
Thank you. We'll start with a roll call, please, Carol.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin. Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel. Midalish Cotwall.
Yes.
Sonako Carney.
We'll note that Lisa is running a few minutes late. She contacted us a little bit ago, so she'll be joining us shortly. So we will move on with our first communication agenda item, and that is invitation for public comment. Do we have the list?
Carol hands list to Jim.
Okay, on the list, Marnie Navarro.
Marnie Navarro approaches the podium.
Good evening. My name is Marnie Navarro, proud lifelong Libertyville resident, District 70 and District 128 graduate, single mother to a current Highland 6th grader, future Libertyville Wildcat. District 128 has $100 million annual budget, 72% surplus, and spends a whopping $20,000 a year per student, per year, for our 3,300 students. As we'll see in one of our presentations this evening, that money is our money. I have your project here. It is nearly entirely funded by local property taxes. We get very, very little federal and state funding. This is our property tax funding. Lake County is the highest taxed county in all of Illinois. Over 77% of our property taxes go to our schools, and Illinois is the second highest taxed state in the country. And our property taxes keep increasing. Mine went up 8.5% this year alone, and we're going to hear more tonight about the estimated tax levy. Spoiler alert, it keeps getting more and more expensive to live in District 128. We are simply being taxed to death. Many of us who grew up here and envisioned raising our families and retiring here are being choked out and taxed out of our beloved hometown. Yet we've returned here to raise our children predicated primarily on the historical strength of our schools. So to have learned in the past eight months that District 128 is not remotely the district it once was, our standardized test scores down, declining enrollment, no standardized grading scale is a hard pill to swallow. Paying much more and getting less is hard to tolerate. That's why we, parents and taxpayers and community members, are watching so carefully and have been very offended by the wasteful spending that has plagued 128, especially in the past three and a half years. Although Herman is gone, her legacy of building the most bloated administration in Lake County remains. And we query whether we have received the return on investment for our incredible outlay. It was very difficult to have sat through the recent meeting when we heard that we can't afford to make the necessary repairs to the stairs at LHS because the money's not there. Where is our money? Literally millions have been sunk into bad hires and expensive buyouts and unsupported ideological initiatives, which this board and administration supported and are continuing. We're going to see on tonight's agenda an update on MTSS. While we certainly appreciate that we're in the very nascent stages of the school year, it's not lost on us that this update paints a very incomplete picture of the actual impact of Herman's version of APA in heterogeneous classrooms. We need to be honest to our students, parents, and community. It was this board, this board, who stalwartly and unflinchingly backed Herman and continues her initiative even after she's gone. We need to hear the whole truth, nothing but the truth. For how expensive and disruptive Herman's short and volatile three-and-a-half-year tenure was to our students and community, we need to accurately and honestly assess and recalibrate or abandon outright that which does not serve our actual students, not some hypothetical district with demographics and needs completely in opposite from ours. Lastly, I note from the presentations forthcoming this evening, yet more doubling down on our strategic plan. I'd like to talk about our strategic plan. It was formulated in the fall of 2021 in the middle of COVID and COVID-19. It was based upon a survey of a-
Three minutes is up, please. Wrap it up.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. That's less than 10%. And yet we have continued to expend simply an incredible amount of money, staffing, and effort, and it calls for full implementation by '26 to '28. Please note, community, hear me, none of the three pillars of the strategic plan nor of the six tenets of Daring even mention academics or education. We as a community, we're a public school. Get back in your lane. 507 board seats are up for election in less than six short months. We'll have a new superintendent, a new principal at Vernon Hills. Stop charging ahead with Herman's disastrous ideological initiatives. Put a stop to the belief. Be responsible placeholders into the new board deceded, the board that will lead this district out of chaos and into the next chapter of rebuilding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was all from the list. Would anyone else like to address the board this evening? Please come up.
Lisa Rosie approaches the podium.
Hi. My name is Lisa Rosie, and I live in Vernon Hills. Um, I pay my property taxes at $15,000.
Can you step closer to the mic, please, so that people can hear? Yeah, thank you.
I pay my property taxes at $15,000. Plus, I have heard that this board renewed Herman's contract, you know, two years ago, and I don't understand why you would do that, and now we're left with this mess to pay her out through the golden parachute. I just can't understand this. I work very hard. I work two jobs, like a lot of people who have to make ends meet here. That's the way it works, because it's expensive. And I think that each and every one of you should think about what is going on and let the next board decide who is going to be the superintendent and possibly even the principal, because I would say the people who made this decision to renew Herman's contract aren't even fit to be dog catchers. So I would say please consider that, and thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay.
John Hetzel approaches the podium.
Good evening, John Hetzel. I have a freshman and junior in Vernon Hills High School, girls. I wanted to say tonight that I feel like anybody that plans to run for this board in the spring needs to be competent and capable and creative with their solutions to how they approach things. We have three board members who have recently been asking very hard questions, accountability questions, and we have four that never ask a hard question and seem to rubber stamp things, including Herman's contract and all the other issues that took place. Plus, I also look at their backgrounds, and I don't see that they've ever been in any kind of position to run $100 million organization with 500 employees, which are teachers. I do think that it's important to have an educator or two on the board, but we have three or four. But at least one of them asks a lot of hard questions. I don't see hard questions being asked. I don't see accountability being asked. Jim Batson, you've been on this board forever. I brought this up before. You're a yes man. I've never even seen you ask a hard question yet. That doesn't make you competent for this position as president and being anointed it because Ms. Hessel stepped down. We need to have good, competent, well-thought-out people that know how to find creative solutions. Also, I think the district and the families, the communities, and the kids are very tired of you all not truly being equitable and inclusive and taking one or two small subgroups and lifting them up above everybody else and making it such a priority. I think you need to start getting back to the basics and understand that these kids have all grown up in a very diverse society. I'm not saying, and I said this two years ago, I'm not so sure this board has. So I think it's important that whoever's going to run in this election next time does the due diligence, pays attention to what's been going on, has been in the trenches, has reviewed all the FOIA documents that have happened, and that have knowledge and understanding and is not slinging bagels for a living. And we need to have people who are competent in business, education, and professional services, legal in particular. We still have a problem with our legal representation in this community, at this high school, at this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Pause for the public.
Okay, hearing done. We'll move on. Next on the agenda is the teacher union report.
Monica Caldicott approaches the podium.
Hello and good evening. I'm Monica Caldicott, President of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the school board. This is a bit of a meta moment, because I will use our union communications time to speak to you about the idea of communication. The need to be heard is a foundational human need, and the need to listen is a human imperative. I want to summarize how our union communicates with this district's administration and you, the school board. One of the main ways our union communicates with the school board are our monthly oral messages, like this one. We appreciate knowing that you listen when we speak directly to you and to the community members who are present or listening online. Over last school year, as our messages became more and more urgent, we wanted the board to listen to us. We appreciated that the board did hear and act on our concerns about the former superintendent. Our hope moving forward is to have the board more comfortable with a two-way street of communication with our union. A personal communication highlight for me is a weekly meeting with interim Superintendent Dr. Ray Lechner. Dr. Lechner says he loves to visit the schools, and so he nearly always walks across the street here to this library where I work to meet with me, and at the same time, he gets to see the cool stuff that our students are doing. Dr. Nelson, you are always welcome. On a monthly basis, we communicate at the Labor hyphen Management Committee. So I am a true blue grammar nerd. So to me, the hyphen between labor and management is essential. In the same way that "let's eat, comma, grandma" is different than "let's eat, grandma", so too does that hyphen impact the meaning of the name of this monthly committee. The hyphen shows that this is a joint committee of two parts, labor and management, not an attempt to manage your labor union. A labor management committee is sometimes called the kitchen table of a union and district relationship. Perhaps your family also coaxed you or your children to share their daily highs and lows when you gathered around the kitchen table. I know my own children always loved that part. This committee also has had communication highs and lows. A recent high is that we are approaching agreement on procedures for students who need to or wish to retake a class or a semester or a year-long class. This near agreement will soon resolve an ongoing union grievance regarding admin's changing of a student grade granted by a union member. However, a recent low in communications has led our union to file a new grievance. When communication is spot-on, we make good progress. When communication is absent, that doesn't usually bode well. When administration made class sectioning decisions and related teacher jobs reductions in March 2024 with no communication to our union, it resulted in a grievance. A step in the grievance process allows the union to appeal to the school board, and you heard from me late into the evening on April 15th. Future class sectioning discussions will have much better outcomes, because the school board last month approved a memorandum of understanding with our union that lays out a communication timeline to include union input. It is frustrating when our union feels that we talk more with the district's lawyers than we do with administrators. We bring up issues important in our classrooms, and we here will ask the lawyers. When we press for solutions on problems, we hear, "The lawyers tell us we have to." It's hard for communication to flow or bounce off each other when it's put through a lawyer lens. Given how much time we spend together, wouldn't it be easier just to talk things out? Soon, we will also begin communications across the negotiations table. Our union contract expires June 30th, 2025. On October 7th, we sent a demand-to-bargain letter along with a list of district information and data we need to craft well-defended contract proposals. Across the negotiating table, administration and the board members will hear the issues that are important to our union members. We'll share the rationale and the reasons for each of our proposals, often illustrated with personal stories, and in return, we will hear what the administration prioritizes. Tonight, you are hearing one voice, my voice, but know that when our union leaders speak, we speak for the 300 members of our strong union. If we have learned anything over this past year, it is that communication and working together is the key to maintaining excellent school standards and doing what is best for our students. We look forward with hope and with optimism that all district leaders want to strengthen our communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is the Educational Support Professionals Union Report. Thank you.
Denise Fuentes approaches the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I am Denise Fuentes, ESP Union Secretary and Community Liaison here at Vernon Hills High School. I'm happy to report to you all tonight. I want to start off with some shout-outs and thank-yous. Thank you, Bryant, for requesting ESP volunteers in the ESP Union Exec Board to join focus groups for the superintendent search. We look forward to the conversations and collaborating with the consultant firm in the district. Now, for some ESP shout-outs. Thank you to all ESPs across the district that were working behind the scenes leading up to and day of the Thursday, October 10th, Daring Day events. We cannot forget our buildings, grounds, and IT crews for making sure our buildings were ready for the day. Way to go, everyone. We'd also like to thank the following ESPs who worked with admin in the district to plan for the October 11th Institute Day. Jackie Roelak, Lena Scolacci, Jen Shepherd, Mary Therese Durkin, Susan Pincel, Kurt Hinsberger, Tim Akers, Jennifer Crane, Mark Small, and Kim Williams. Thank you for your dedication to this committee to ensure that we had proper and relevant training sessions for Institute Day. We look forward to engaging in conversations on the February edX Day. Mary Toddrick, thank you for coming to teach us about communications on Institute Day. That was a very fun and informative session. She's really the best. Also, Mary, thank you. Thank you for telling the consultants of the superintendent search to add support staff to the vacancy notice. We want to have a professional working relationship with the new superintendent. We want to make sure that the new superintendent knows who the ESPs are in the buildings and what we do. We hope the same can be said for when the search for VHHS's principal begins. This year's theme for Institute Day of Belief and Belonging and the Year isn't lost on ESP. For many years, we didn't feel like we belonged, and let's be honest, we sometimes still feel this way. We are being left out of reports, left out of conversations. We didn't have a seat at the table until now, or the content was just for teachers. Our ask is to continue to include us, include us in the planning, include us in the conversation, include us in the data reports, and so on. My personal belief is that the community in which we serve deserves to know us, too. Know what we do and how we support our students, their teachers, the administration, and the community, because the relationships that we build with students and their families mean so much to us. It's the driving force behind what we do. We build relationships with the communities, our families, just as well as the teachers do. As Tom mentioned at Institute Day, let's work together to remove these barriers and remember that the district's strategic plan includes not only teacher and student voices and experiences, it's also the ESP voice and the ESP experience as well. Now, let's share what the buildings have been up to. We start with Pathways. The young adults have spent a great deal of time traveling via the Metro, Pace Bus, and/or CTA in downtown Chicago. Several of them took the Metro to downtown Chicago and then took the CTA, including transferring from the Blue Line to the Red Line. They navigated the cities and streets and managed their time to enable them to have lunch and take the same tracks back to return to Libertyville by 2:00 p.m. Many of them are also exploring CLC options, and several are attending classes. They are learning to budget their time in order to accommodate school, work, and pastimes, which may include Special Olympics and Best Buddies, as well as socializing. Several are learning about the experiences and skills needed for living on their own and budgeting, as well as healthy economic cooking. Some of them are starting to put together a healthy cooking digital cookbook. Many are working at their jobs, having acquired on their own or with the help of staff at Pathways. Some are working in micro businesses, making t-shirts, magnets, coasters, crafts, or puzzles. There are several learning jobs at local businesses. At LHS, the Little Mermaid production happened this past weekend, and it was spectacular performance. We would just like to highlight some of their work, as our ESPs have done to contribute to this wonderful experience for our students and community. We want to take a moment to shine a spotlight on Kevin Holly, LHS's incredible technical theater coordinator. Kevin dedicates countless hours to ensure that the stage setup, lighting, and technical coordination are nothing short of exceptional. His attention to detail and commitment to excellence make a significant impact on every performance. Kevin's expertise not only enhances the visual experience, but also supports the performers and creative teams, allowing them to shine on stage. Thank you, Kevin, for your hard work and passion. We are grateful for everything you do to bring productions to life. We also want to thank the other ESPs who dedicated their time to helping with the play, those who helped with supervision and ticket sales, and so on. Para professionals have also supported our students in visiting the Botanical Gardens and Whitewater University to explore post-secondary opportunities. They also took local trips to a doctor's office and Lowe's to improve their life skills. Our students also mailed letters to local businesses seeking donations for Best Buddies Carnival. If you know and are willing to donate, please reach out. At VHHS, the ESP group made up of union and non-union members met to discuss the year and the events that we want to do this year, fundraising opportunities for our scholarship, and much more. ESPs helped with Daring Day from walking business partners to their locations, assisting with hospitality, and so on. ESPs have been working with their clubs, such as Laura Rash walked a breast cancer walk with Dare to Empower. Our campus safety personnel, Rob Nardini, coached the girls' flag football team to their championship. Way to go, Coach. Way to go, girls. We have data processing. Debbie Lehman and Jen Shepherd already planning a school year for next year with pre-registration with our feeder schools. Nicole Carson is coordinating college visits and career panels for our students, and we had ESP-recognized students at Cougar Class Act. VHHS would also like to spotlight the crew of Hades Town and those that work tickets, supervising, and everything in between, but we have two very dedicated ESP members that have poured their heart and souls into this production. First, Sarah Gunther, co-tech director, also referred to as the engine and the machinery by Drew Russell, the Fine Arts Department Chair. Sarah worked behind the scenes, making sure that all pieces came together. As she told us, she's looking forward to the freshman winter play, The Con. She will be making her directorial debut here at Vernon Hills that year, or for that play. And then Kevin Phelan, the director with a captivating students with an unbelievable set. He also pulls double duty as a director and co-director, but it's more like triple duty, along with Jen Phelan, the costume and set designer. The three of them coordinate the student crew. As Sarah mentioned, Hades Town is one of the best they've done. The show is a unique ensemble-driven musical with tech elements interwoven to help tell the story. Way to go. Thank you to all the ESPs across the district that have volunteered their time to work in athletic event, fine arts event, sponsor of student activity, and all the things that are happening in our buildings. Without your support in working these events, there wouldn't be supervisors, security, tech staff, ticket staff, scoring staff, bus drivers for the VHH Activity Bus, and everything else that we volunteer for, along with the teachers who also volunteer their time to work these events. All of this to say, the relationships that our ESPs are creating and cultivating in our buildings is in everything that we do, day in and day out. Whether it's behind the scenes or in classrooms, our ESPs are there for our students and families in the district. Thank you to all ESPs of District 128. We believe the work that you do and make our buildings one everyone belongs at. Thank you. Have a good night, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much for both those reports. I'm going to review the agenda here real quick. Coming up next will be the Student School Board Representative Reports, followed by some FOIA requests and some good news by our superintendent. Consent vote agenda will follow that. These are items that have been discussed previously in committee and are typically routine things that happen on a monthly basis or an annual basis. For action items tonight, we have a group of policies for second reading and adoption. We have some additional ESP staff, FTE at VHHS to discuss. Employment of employees on the agenda, educational tour requests that came in after our meeting earlier in the month, our committee meetings. The FY25 State Maintenance Project Grant will be taken action on, and disposal of equipment. After that, we have one item for discussion. That's the 2024 Estimated Tax Levy. And then we have some informational items, the superintendent report, board comments and events, IASB report, and the CDAL report. Nothing tonight, okay? And then we will move into executive session, a closed session, to discuss collective negotiating matters and employment of employees, and we will not be taking any action after that. Now, before I hand it over to the students, some of you may wonder why I'm sitting here going through this process. And just as a bit of information, earlier in the month, Lisa has decided to step down from her role as president of board. I thank her for her years of support and service and all the hard work that she's put into this role, and look forward to working with her as a board member on this board. The process goes. As vice president, I step into the president role. The vice president role remains unfilled until the April election, when we do a board reorganization, unless some other event happens in the interim. So I look forward to leading this board in this period of time. I would ask for both the board and the community's patience as I move into this role, somewhat unexpectedly, but happy to move into this role and learn the processes and the things that I need to know as president. In spite of my many years in board service, I have yet to officially take the board president role until now. So there's things that happen that I will learn about, so that'll be a good learning opportunity for me. So we will move on and turn it over to the student board representatives for their reports.
Good evening. I'd like to discuss two major events that occurred in October, the Homecoming Assembly and Daring Day. Starting with the Homecoming Assembly, we saw a fantastic turnout and high energy as students gathered to celebrate homecoming. Students from all grades were enthusiastic about the assembly, which brought a real sense of excitement to the school. The assembly included performances from Libertyville's band, cheer team, choir, dance team, and more, with even teachers performing a dance per tradition. Next, Daring Day on October 10th offered each grade a unique experience. With the half-day schedule, students participated in various activities, mostly with the goal of supporting their future. Freshmen gathered as a full class, focusing on the Green Dot program, while senior Green Dot ambassadors helped lead activities, encouraging freshmen to learn more about Green Dot and how to act in various situations. Many freshmen enjoyed the immersive activities, while some freshmen indicated that there may have been a better use of their time. Sophomores explored career paths through a career fair, where leaders from different fields volunteered to discuss their area of work. They also participated in a School Links activity to help signify possible future interests and goals. Lastly, they experienced a post-secondary panel with representatives from universities, the College of Lake County, and the military. This provided sophomores with new perspectives on their future options. Juniors who registered for the PSAT and MSQT completed their testing. Seniors took on leadership roles as Green Dot ambassadors, participated in college essay feedback sessions, or used their time for other measures. Senior Erica Lee said, "The essay guidance and feedback that I received was very helpful for my application, but the 20 minutes went by very quickly." He said that there wasn't enough time to get through his entire personal statement, so additional time in the future may be helpful. Both the Homecoming Assembly and Daring Day were great experiences for students at LHS to take part in. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Victoria.
Victoria Diaz-Martin-Stacosta.
Good evening, everyone. During the beginning of this month, LHS had its yearly Spirit Week in Homecoming Dance. As mentioned last month, the theme of the dance was Disney. The weekend prior to the dance, September 29th, sports and clubs participated in window painting in downtown Libertyville, and each grade decorated their hallway with their significant color. Clubs and sports painted the windows of local shops and restaurants that are found on Libertyville's Main Road. Some examples were the cheerleading team painting Shakoo, student council painting Sweet Home Gelato, and Best Buddies painting Milky Way Trace. Then, during the dance week, the student council created a theme for each day of the week in order to get students excited about the dance. week in order to get students excited about the dance. Monday was an orange and black day, Tuesday was tropical, Wednesday was Monsters University themed, Thursday was dress up as your favorite Disney character, and Friday was Color Wars, a popular among student body. During the Spirit Week, both staff and students dressed up as the theme for the day to show their support. Around 1,400 total students attended the dance on Saturday, making it a memorable night. When asked about the homecoming festivities in the dance, Parker Lester, a senior, responded with, "I thought the Spirit Days were pretty good, but Color Wars were my favorite. I stayed at the dance only around an hour, but it was fun seeing my friends there." Parker Lester is on the cheer team and she also participated in the parade Saturday morning and the assembly the day before. Another student, Maggie Fabishak, reported that the Spirit Days were fun and cute this year and agreed with Parker, saying Color Wars were also her favorite. Maggie only stayed at the dance for 30 minutes, however, she said that the DJ was good for the time she was there, and her favorite part of the dance was the homecoming court getting announced. Overall, students have reported positive comments about the festivities prior to the dance and the dance itself. Like always, students are grateful for the hard work staff and student council do in order to get everything ready for the dance. Now going to Sira.
Sira Abraham. Hello and good evening. This year, as many of you know, when students return from summer break, many renovations to the school had been completed and some were still being finished. From changes in the cafeteria to the bathrooms to new ceiling, lighting, and tiling to much more, students were greeted by a transformed school. The most notable renovation in the eyes of students seemed to be the newly renovated bathroom outside of the cafeteria. Many students recall that they previously had never used the bathroom due to the large cracks between the stalls, the dysfunctional locks, and the dirty and dark environment. However, now after the renovations, students have significantly changed their opinions. Maddie Chung, a returning junior, says, "The new bathroom is definitely cleaner and more modern looking, which has persuaded me and others to use it more often." One other detail implemented that I liked was that the stall doors reached all the way to the floor, giving students more privacy. Additionally, students have expressed positive opinions about the new paint jobs in the school. With the fresh paint in the hallways, cafeteria, and other places, many students report liking the new colors because they make the school seem more inviting. Sophomore Joshua John says that he liked the new paint colors because they refreshed the hallways and made them look more modern and less outdated. Not only are students excited about the completed renovations, they're also looking forward to the future ones, especially those of the, those of the cafeteria that will give them a wider variety of meal options with a more organized food service area. Senior Lynn George says, "I was very excited to hear of the upcoming cafeteria renovations, but I was a little disappointed I won't get to experience them for myself. That said, even though my class will not be here to experience them, I'm grateful that we got to experience the first couple." She remains excited for the underclassmen who will get to experience the many changes to make our school a better place. Overall, it is fair to say that all the students seem to be extremely appreciative and content with the board's decision to implement these much-needed renovation projects to the school. Thank you.
Eman Diayela. Good evening. Last time we reported, we were just starting our Homecoming Week. The week was filled with highlights, including seniors winning the color competition, soccer and football winning the two Homecoming Games, and a near-record attendance at the dance. Dr. G also celebrated our 20, our school's 25 years of excellence with a halftime recognition of alumni, retirees, and many important community members. Thank you to all that participated in this important celebration. Next, on October 18th, we got to award 18 students with the Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. These students were awarded this honor on the basis of their good character and display of our daring mission across their classes, extracurriculars, and community. Way to go Cougars. Also, last Wednesday, Vernon Hills Little Free Library was unveiled. This project, worked on by Ms. Caldecott, Kyle Soa, myself, and others, has been in the making for over a year and we're so excited that our community now has a chance to read such amazing books. And in true Dr. G Theasen, he of course said that the library was a prime demonstration of the three pillars of Vernon Hills High School: the students, the staff, and the community. Speaking of reading, on October 17th, Vernon Hills welcomed author Hudah Fami into our building to meet with students. During the day, she presented to classes in the morning, then autographed books during periods four and five, and that had, and then had lunch with both the Book Club and Muslim Student Association. Thank you Hudah Fami for coming into our space. And off to Daniela.
Daniela Gomez-Ánez. Hello. This month at VHS, we have had a wide variety of celebrations between Senior Nights and Hispanic Heritage Month. As our fall sports season begins to wrap up, there have been copious notable accomplishments. Our girls' flag football team were conference division champions, and our girls' cross-country team took first place in conference. Additionally, sophomore Ella Olinger and senior Joy Ellen will be advancing to sectionals next week. Furthermore, the boys' cross-country team as a whole will be advancing to sectionals. Finally, girls' volleyball has had a remarkable 22 wins during their season so far. We also have had, have been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Mrs. Heinlein, one of the staff advisors for Lasso, helped organize a various amount of activities. For example, every Wednesday, we had a whole school trivia for a chance to win churros. Unfortunately, my class did not win. We also played Lotería in the foyer during lunch periods for a chance to win some Hispanic candies. Furthermore, another Friday activity that took place was that we made flowers en papel picado. Finally, this Friday, our school will be having Fat Rosies coming in in order to celebrate Dia de los Muertos. Lastly, we had a few weeks, a few weeks ago, our choice zone welcome and information tour took place in which we had families deciding between the two schools come in and get a taste of the VHHS culture. We had a presentation led by Dr. Young, which was afterwards followed by eight student tour guides. Each took one family around the building showcasing what makes VHS such a special place. Senior Callie Bennett says that during her tour, she talked about the classes that she took and said she was able to form bonds with potential Cougars and their families. Now passing it off to Griffin.
Griffin Nichols. Thank you. Wrapping it up for this month at Vernon Hills, we are at the halfway point of first semester. As such, we've had our Daring Day. On this day, freshmen had the Rite Assembly where senior speakers and Speaker Mike Donahue would speak to students about respect, integrity, and trust. Sophomores had a day where they could discover future careers for themselves. Juniors had the PSAT, MSQT, and seniors had the time to review their college apps and/or be a speaker and a leader in the Rite Assembly. Senior Speaker at the Assembly, Tomas Star, said, "Being able to share my story to the freshmen almost felt like everything went full circle. Four years ago, we were the ones in those seats, and now as seniors, we're leaving our la-la legacy to them. It was really an amazing experience." In the session this month, we've had our, had our second Vich Give event where Vich Give leaders presented to their second period classes slides about students putting the cellphone down and taking some time for self-care. As a way to promote and encouraging mindfulness of ourselves and our peers, we held a five-day-long bingo game and gave out prizes to those who did all the self-care activities that we provided them. Bingo winner Mauricio Sanchez stated that it was very fun and very exciting. In a week full of tests and exams, it made his day. Lastly, our fall musical, Hades Town, premiered on the 25th and 26th to thunderous applause. The play follows Orpheus, a young heroine who visits underworld to trace his true love purity. Jonathan Protes, a senior in the play, said, "We've had a great first two shows. The audience went on a journey with us. You could feel the energy in the room." Be sure to see the play on November 22nd or 3rd if you haven't already. That's all for us here at Vernon Hills.
Pause for applause.
Thank you. It's always, in my mind, one of the highlights to hear from the students, what's going on in the, in the district. So moving on, we have some FOIA requests as listed.
Momentary pause.
Unless there's any questions or comments about that. We don't need to read those or anything, do we? I'll move on. We'll have some good news.
I am happy to share the following good news about District 128. First of all, eight District 128 Special Olympics athletes competed at the sectional bowling meet on Saturday at Cherry Bowl in Rockford. Our bowlers brought home eight medals, two gold, three silver, and three bronze. Gold medalists Eddie Beecher and Alexis Gallegos qualified to represent the District 128 Storm at the state meet on December 7th in Peoria. Next, congratulations to our students named to the Illinois Music Educator Association District Seven Festivals. Seventeen LHS students and 22 VHHS students were selected in the various areas of choir, orchestra band, jazz, and vocal jazz. Now, being selected to the Illinois MEA State Festival is the highest individual honor a high school musician can receive. We look forward to hearing how many will be selected to participate in the upcoming state festival. Next, earlier this month, Fireman Tony from the Countryside Fire Protection District announced the winners of this year's fire safety video contest at VHHS. Participants were asked to create a compelling 30-second video highlighting the importance of smoke alarms. In line with the fire prevention theme, smoke alarms make them work for you. So congratulations to this year's winner. First place with $500, Abraham Guo, Sr. Second place, $400, Paige Poland and Campbell Fenton, freshmen. Third place of $300, Arnav Garg, freshman. Next, congratulations to the District 128 Foundation for Learning's 11th Annual Alumni Achievement Award recipients. First, Ike Riley, LHS class of 1980, and Peter Lopez, VHHS class of 2012. They will be honored at the Foundation's big event on November 8th at Austin's in Libertyville. Tickets are still available online for the event, and all proceeds benefit programs for students at LHS, VHHS, and transition pathways. And finally, this last Friday was Principal Appreciation Day. Tonight, we'd like to celebrate our incredible school leaders who guide and inspire us every day. Dr. Ray Albin, who is navigating his first year as LHS principal with enthusiasm and fresh ideas. Ray, your passion for our students and staff is truly infectious. And a heartfelt thank you to Dr. John Gilliam, who is in his final year as VHHS principal. John, your unwavering dedication and leadership have shaped our school community in countless ways. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our two District 128 principals.
Jim Batson.
That's great to hear. Thank you to both of you for your leadership. Okay, moving on, we have a consent vote agenda. I neglected to ask earlier, does any board member wish to remove anything from the agenda as presented?
No.
Okay. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
Carmichael, move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to action items, board policies, second reading. I'm going to turn this over to Don Carmichael, Chair of the PMP Committee.
Yeah, we have five policies. We've gone through both of them several times. I'm at the point now where I don't have to look at these anymore. I am comfortable and confident that we will take the recommendation to adopt these policies. Does anybody have anything that, actually, let's just start with a motion.
Batson, so move to approve the second reading and adoption of these policies as presented.
Momentary pause.
Carmichael, second. Is there any discussion?
Cara Drumkey. I have one question on Policy 2260, which was the grievance procedure. On page three, it says that the superintendent will keep the board informed of all complaints. Is there a time, I mean, is there a suggested interval of time between complaint and investigation when the board is informed that a complaint's been made?
Brian Kelly.
There is not a, like, suggested timeline. I think, you know, looking at this, I think it, it just depends on when, you know, they receive the complaint and then maybe the status of the complaint and when to inform the board.
I mean, would it be inappropriate to add, like, as soon as practicable, as soon as, I mean, is there something that we, I know that we have communication, but something that starts the clock ticking of when the board is kind of looped in when complaints are made?
Momentary pause.
Or is it something we want to talk about further and just?
Yeah, we, we can always adjust the, the policy.
Approving that policy, I mean, that was the only thing.
Well, you can still approve the policy and then amend it at another date.
Oh, then amend it later.
Yeah, we can discuss it.
But I like the idea.
Pause for discussion and questions.
Are there any other points? Okay, Carol, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Don Carmichael.
Okay, moving on to item B, additional educational support personnel. Turn it over to Bryant.
Bryant Kelly.
And this item was not, due to the timing of this item and our last PMP, this was not at the PMP. So I've shared some of the information on there that we, due to our EL population here at Vernon Hills, are requesting to approve an additional 1.0 FTE for an EL aid at Vernon Hills High School. The current EL population at Vernon Hills is approximately 150 students, and the school is in need of an additional aid to support the larger number of Ukrainian and Russian-speaking students. So in consultation with Dr. Tom Kalanis and Jessica Fernandez, our EL Department Chair, they did an extensive, you know, it, it wasn't just, hey, we need to do this. They relooked at how they've been allocating the FTE for their aides at both buildings and determined that we are coming to you with a request. There were no contingencies that were built into our original request with ESP that we had in the spring, so we are asking for a 1.0.
And I note that you shared with us that although this is approving this role at Vernon Hills High School, there is one that had been approved for transition pathways but was not needed due to the non-enrollment of a student?
So there, so we're, we're asking for an additional 1.0 here. We also had, due to a non-enrollment at transition pathways, we never filled that position. We were like, that position, we would just transfer to here. So we have another, we have more need at Vernon Hills High School. And so one of our non-filled positions at transition pathways, we will fill it in a position here at Vernon Hills High School.
So it's a net zero, basically?
No, it's, we are looking at 2.0. We're asking for an additional 1.0.
I see.
So it's, yeah, it's an additional 1.0 here at Vernon Hills.
Okay.
Momentary pause.
And this does not affect that, that change in that position from transition pathways to here does not affect any of our current staff members because that position was never filled due to non-enrollment of a student in transition.
But that position has been budgeted. You're asking for an additional 1.
Correct. That is correct. Yes. For EL aid here.
Don Carmichael.
Okay, well, we'll start with a motion and then if there's additional discussion, we'll get to it then. So may I have a motion to approve an additional 1.0 FTE for an EL aid at Vernon Hills High School?
Drumkey, motion to approve an additional 1.0 FTE for an EL aid at Vernon Hills High School.
Benjamin, second.
Very good discussion.
I kind of remember, I believe there is a, there's a certain number of students at which point you need to have, is that more of a department chair and not really this?
You're correct. So the state of Illinois outlines for us a number of different, like, thresholds. So for one, the first number is if you have 20 students who speak the same language, you need to provide what would be called like native language supports and instruction for those students. So in this case, at Vernon Hills High School, we passed the, the 20-student threshold for Russian, and so we need to provide native language support for students in Russian. And this position is directly connected to providing those supports for those students. There are also different thresholds that you are referencing for when you have to add a department chair and when you have to add like a district director. We've met the threshold for the department chair and Jessica Hernandez, Fernandez is serving in that role. We have not met the threshold yet for a district-level person.
Thank you.
Cara Benjamin.
Tom, do you mind me asking what, what that threshold is?
I'm going to have to review for the, the district. Do you know it, Dan?
So just to slightly modify what he said, so 200 students, once you read 200 students, you have to have an administrator assigned to oversee the program. you have to have an administrator assigned to oversee the program. The law doesn't tell you necessarily how, that doesn't tell you that it has to be a 1.0 that only does that, but there has to be an administrator assigned to oversee that program. And so for us, that's what Jessica Fernandez is over, is serving in that role for us. So 200 is the threshold overall. Once you hit that level, then 20 is the, the language threshold.
And then at that point, another district-level administrator needs to be added, correct?
No.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The requirement is, once you hit 200, then you have to have an administrator assigned to oversee the EL program. There, to my knowledge, there's not other requirements beyond that, beyond the 200. So once you get to 400, it, I'm not aware of another threshold that makes another requirement beyond that.
But in the future, if we do have to add an administrator, this would be potentially a reason why.
Yeah, that, some of that will depend on, so there's what the, what the law or what ISB would require you to do versus what we might recommend to do based on the unique population that we have, and depending on where that's happening, if it's at one building versus another.
Thanks. I, I do have a question. So these two positions, I mean, and these are direct support to students, right? And that's what they need. So just, so we get a picture, how many students do you think these aides would be helping to facilitate, or the support staff would be helping to support?
Yeah, there's two.
What's our effect, you know, sorry, go ahead.
There's two different kind of needs that we have. So one of the aides will be what would be more of a general classroom aide, and they would be working with different teachers throughout the day, meeting in those classrooms, working to support Russian-speaking students and Ukrainian-speaking students who are in those classes.
And more of like a push-in kind of a model?
Absolutely, yes. And then working in, we have EL support, which is a class where students work on their language goals, and they would be working in there. But essentially, we're targeting approximately 30 students per EL aide is roughly our, our ratio there. And then we, but throughout the day, they could be working with many more because they're in different classrooms, right? But then one of the positions, the one that was being transferred over from Pathways, we have a, a student who very likely needs one-on-one support. And so that student would have a one-on-one aide, that aide would work with that student throughout the day, but other aides may also work with that student, but one person would be largely connected to that child throughout much of the day.
Don Carmichael.
Anything else? Carol, roll call.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to employment of employees, these are additional employees that were not discussed at the PNP two weeks ago. Is there anything you need to say, Bryant?
Bryant Kelly.
We just have one of, one of our aide positions that, our final aide position here at Vernon Hills being filled, and then some coaching hires.
See, Casey's going to be coaching bowling. Nice. Okay, can I have a motion to approve employment items received after the PNP committee meeting?
Drumkey, motion to approve employment items received after the PNP committee.
Hessel, second.
Any discussion? Carol, roll call.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye. Okay, moving on to Item D, Educational Tour Request. It's Model UN.
Dr. Tom Culentes.
Model UN annual trip to, I believe it's, this one is to Chicago, if I'm not mistaken, and everything's in order, and we wish them luck.
Yeah. May I have a motion to?
We need our diplments, our diplomats.
Yes, we do.
Yes. Is this where they, sorry, we need a motion.
All right, motion to approve educational tour as presented.
Hessel, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Now, is there something you wanted to say?
Is this where they, I know there's different sites for the different Model UN. Is this where we typically go, is the Chicago location? I know there's like a Champaign one, and a Bloomington, Indiana one.
This one has been a common one for us, yes.
Good luck. We need.
Okay, Carol, roll call.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye. Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Last item for action is the disposal of equipment. We have a shipping container to dispose of.
Hessel, motion to approve disposal of attached equipment.
Yeah, those, those came in after the FNF committee, so we were including it as a separate item.
Carmichael, second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
How big a shipping container is this? Like, one of those really big ones?
Momentary pause.
Like a 40 footer?
Like, why do we have a shipping container?
It's the size of a, like a semi-tractor trailer.
Really?
Yeah, we have three of them that are down at hotel registry. We have two.
Were we using them for storage at one point?
We still are.
Okay.
Yeah, I live, I live in the things.
Handy for storage.
They are the new rave. Have you seen the tiny houses? They are the shipping container houses.
Ooh, project.
They look very cool.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please, Carol.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Last item for action is the disposal of equipment. We have a shipping container to dispose of.
Hessel, motion to approve disposal of attached equipment.
Yeah, those, those came in after the FNF committee, so we were including it as a separate item.
Carmichael, second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
How big a shipping container is this? Like, one of those really big ones?
Momentary pause.
Like a 40 footer?
Like, why do we have a shipping container?
It's the size of a, like a semi-tractor trailer.
Really?
Yeah, we have three of them that are down at hotel registry. We have two.
Were we using them for storage at one point?
We still are.
Okay.
Yeah, I live, I live in the things.
Handy for storage.
They are the new rave. Have you seen the tiny houses? They are the shipping container houses.
Ooh, project.
They look very cool.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please, Carol.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next item is a discussion item, the 2024 estimated tax levy. Dan, take it away.
So at the committee meeting, we went through presentation of information of context, background, the process, and the numbers. I'm not going to go through that presentation again tonight, because the information hasn't changed since our last meeting. If you're interested and you want to know, it is in the committee video that's there. I believe it's at hour 2:31 is when it starts, if you want to watch. But the information is very similar. So based on state law calculations, it appears that, in the information that we have, that the, the state, the state law will limit the levy increase to about a 3.78% is our guess. We're recommending a levy of 4.09, really just because the way the algebra works is there's two variables. We don't know the real, we don't know what the real answers will be until spring. We have to make an educated guess. And so that additional going from 3.78 to 4.09 gives you room to do that. And so that's the information on the levy that's used, that's that. So also, as a reminder, those were, those levy numbers were assumed in our financial projections. So if you look at our long-term projections, that's with those levy numbers in there. So that's the information for that. Will, the next steps is we have another committee meeting a week from today that this will be on again, and that will have more of the resolutions and kind of the final documents. And then at the November board meeting, that's when we would present this for adoption for the board for the 2024 levy.
So this is for informational purposes, an estimate of what that eventually will be next month. Anyone have any comments or questions? I know we discussed this quite extensively at committee.
No, it's a great presentation.
Sanal Colcarney.
I do have one question, and I'm, I'm sorry I missed the, this piece of the FNF, but whenever I look at Slide 28, I get a little worried, which is the projection over the next few years. So I want to ask, when we talk about this every time, what is it that we can do to keep shrinking the bars that are going below the zero?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that, that information is generally given around January, February, once we have all the financial data and I'm able to kind of work on updates on projections. In the February 2024 presentation, I did give you some recommendations in terms of how you can address this. Short answer for you now is, one nice thing is that that is into the future, and there are small things you can do now that have a compounding effect five years from now. And so my goal would be to continue to push off something like that from happening. So we can talk more about it, and I, and it deserves to be refreshed with the new fiscal '24 actual data and the, now the '25 budget data that we have that's newer.
Dan, would you say that our decision to, for instance, nix the learning stairs at the cafeteria remodel was one of those small steps we could have taken?
I would not say that.
Okay.
This, the, the slide that Sanal is referencing is about our operating surplus or deficit, so that's the normal money to run the district here and in your out, the bucket of money that was for the cafeteria and the potential stairs that we chose not to do, that was going to come from our fund balance, which is not part of your operating funds. So I would say the answer to that would be no.
No, thanks.
So when we talk about this next, even if it's just a repeat of last February, because I don't recall, if you don't mind just bringing that, I, I just want to keep that at the forefront when we make levy decisions going forward, to know what, do we have any variables at our disposal other than increasing the levy, I guess is the main question that I'm interested in, so.
Yeah, just to clarify what you're asking, you're asking to do that when we're updating the financial projections to talk about it then?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Makes sense. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, moving on, we have some informational items, the superintendent report.
So that which is on everybody's mind, the superintendent search is off and running, and I have an update for you on that process. So BWP Associates is our partner in the search. The vacancy for the superintendency has been posted on their website, and they are in the process of posting it on many other sites of organizations, including the Illinois Association of School Administrators and others. The main focus in the coming days is to get the message out to our District 128 community about the upcoming survey and community engagement activities. This is really important. The more data that we have, the more input that we have, the more effective this is going to be. I would note that the English and Spanish versions of the survey are ready, and we are now working on the Russian and Ukrainian versions, so every one of our citizens ought to be able to have access to this in a language that is theirs. The survey will be launched on November 6th, and it will end on November 18th, so please keep those dates in mind. In addition to this, of course, the, the search firm is engaged in recruiting activities as well, because they are very active in seeking out candidates who will be a good match for District 128. So as you can see, the search is well underway.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I thought we were going to have, like, these in-person sessions, I thought.
And we've recently completed Progress 2, which is essentially the first quarter of the school year. So we have, for the first time, a look at some student grades and performance data to check in on how our students are performing and how some of our new interventions are operating. All the data that I'm going to share tonight with Dr. Gilliam, Dr. Albin, Mr. Varn, we are going to share some data that was collected between the start of school in August and the completion of P2 or Quarter 1, which was right about October 11th or 10th. There's a lot of data that we have available. What we're attempting to do tonight is a broad overview of our schools and our programs, knowing though that there are many other questions you may have. The next two board meetings that we're going to have are all focused on different data points on our academic progress as a district. So our academic success is very much center of focus for us. And we have three meetings over the next couple of weeks where we'll look at how our students are performing in a variety of measures. Tonight, we're going to look at some preliminary data that focuses on our ninth grade students, our school diagonal movers, and some of our general findings about the performance of students as they navigate our placement process last year. And one other note just to mention is though the schools maintain similar data and almost the exact data, they they do so with different personnel and different procedures and slightly different formats. So we're working to align these, but tonight you might see slightly different kind of representations of the data at Vernon Hills and Libertyville.
Momentary pause.
Oh yeah, that would be so helpful. Thank you, appreciate it. So we're on the slide, second slide.
Pause for slide.
There we go. Go back one, please. So yes, tonight, just to reiterate, we're going to talk about the ninth grade college prep curriculum revisions that we did, check in on some of our diagonal movement, and then look at some of the accelerated placement results. So let's go to our next one. So while there there was definitely interest in reviewing the level downs and drops across the board, we had particular concerns about our incoming freshman class as they would be the first class of students to enter with the APA guidelines in place. There were concerns that perhaps eighth grade families were not fully aware of the implications of the APA changes and that we had a higher number of freshman students being placed into classes that they would not academically be prepared for. So since the start of the year, we've been monitoring our ninth graders closely. This is the data for ninth graders at LHS. It shows that we had 22 students leveled down between the start of the year and October 10th, which was the deadline for level downs. Most of those were spread evenly across our curriculum. At LHS, we did see a large amount of students dropping down out of AP Human Geography. So that is an AP class that freshmen can take. That that class had a larger, the largest number of students leveling down into a college prep social studies.
Pause for slide.
When we look at how the numbers at LHS compared to last year, what we see is that the numbers of level downs are higher from 10 students leveling down in 23, 24 across the curriculum as freshmen to 22 this year. Again, the large number of that increase was last year, we did not have any students drop down out of AP Human Geo and this year we had eight. So that accounts for the largest difference. The other classes are very much in line with what we saw in terms of level downs last year. And again, this is just our freshman class. But what it tells us is the vast majority of freshmen at LHS were in classes where they have continued to stay and learn. When we look at Vernon Hills High School, we have very similar data to LHS. So LHS had 22 freshmen leveled down, Vernon Hills has 24. The biggest drop at Vernon Hills has been in Biology Honors with eight students leveling down. When we look at the data compared to last year at Vernon Hills, we do see significant change. Last year, only one student leveled down at Vernon Hills and that was in English. This year, they're at 24. So six students in math, eight students in science and nine in social studies contribute to that increase. And so clearly there were more students needing to move down at Vernon Hills in the freshman class. All of those students were able to be accommodated in college prep courses that they moved into.
Pause for slide.
I'm going to turn it over right now to Mr. Varn. He's going to talk a little bit about the curriculum design process that our college prep courses in English, Math, Science and Social Studies at the freshman level went through and some of the grade data that we're seeing from those changes.
Thank you, Tom. This is really important work as we develop our heterogeneous class model. In your board packets, you'll see that there is a report for our update on equity and inclusion policy. And it's embedded in tonight's presentation to demonstrate how the equity work really is a part of what we do in everything across our district. And so our ninth grade core college prep classes began this work last year as we started designing what this curriculum model would look like. And it created for us a district-wide curriculum for our four core areas in the ninth grade. So regardless of what campus or what teacher a student in ninth grade has, all D128 ninth grade students in college prep will receive the same skills and and concepts across our district. That's really important for us. This model includes six parts of the template that was designed by our staff. Adopting the pre-AP curriculum or the IB curriculum. And ultimately, our team decided that our students would best be served by having our own professionals, our teachers, to create and design grade level appropriate and a rigorous curriculum that provides adequate support to all students while holding high expectations for them. So this, these curriculum maps were created by our own staff. And in alignment to that, we were removing the striving learner sections and placing everybody in college prep who was not taking either an AP or an honors class. That college prep level would ensure that all students were doing grade level appropriate work. And so some of the important pieces of this work includes the assessment terms. What are the key academic vocabulary that's going to be necessary for students to succeed in this course? And making sure that it was aligned to our shared assessment language. Our students go through eight classes a day. And so when we think about our shared assessment language, that's really our interdisciplinary alignment. When when I am asked to explain in English, is it the same as what the expectation is when I'm asked to explain something in math or science? We really want to make sure that we have clarity around when we are asking our students to explain, that it is the same across all classes. So we did that work. And then in the second column, we looked at our disciplinary concepts. These are our course content that students are going to have to master as a part of, as a part of the course. And then the essential questions really allow us to to understand, what are the big understandings that we want our students to have at the end of the units that we've created? And of course, these units are aligned to our priority standards, which are grade level and national standards, really unpacking those standards and creating what we've considered our success criteria. How do we measure mastery of those standards and those skills embedded within those standards for our students? And those things are the same across all teachers and all course teams in our district now. So when we say that our student is at a certain level of mastery, they are, we have, we have had a process where we are able to work together and and really calibrate what mastery looks like for all students related to specific skills and those standards. So that's why this curriculum design work was so important. And I really applaud our teachers of the ninth grade course teams who came together last year to develop this important curriculum for our for our students.
Pause for slide.
Now, with that curriculum being in place, there were several initiatives that that came into existence this year and we're implementing. Along with the ninth grade heterogeneous work that we were very intentional about designing to make sure that we had curriculum that would be accessible to all students. We also implemented the APA policy, which took students who had met or exceeded standards and moved them to the next most rigorous course level. So when we look at our college prep level ninth grade, we're looking at students who are still striving to meet mastery. Those students who had met mastery are in an advanced level at this point. And when we compare our grade distribution from last year to this year, remember that last year we had not implemented APA. So it does include students who were at or above mastery in their skill development. In 2024, 25, we're looking, we have removed those students from this this setting, this class setting. And so you'll see that the grade distribution, there are fewer As being earned in our Algebra I course. And there are more Bs, Cs, Ds and Fs in comparison to last year. We really want to commend our teachers and our educational support staff who are working with these classes to support these students' needs and really maintain the integrity of the college prep classroom. Remember, we have set ourselves apart in making sure that our college prep level is at grade level and making sure that all students are being held to those grade level standards. So in Algebra I, we recognize that a four-point increase, percentage point increase in Bs and Fs. We believe that our teachers' tier-one instruction and the intervention supports that we have in place are adequate to remediate these, this this disparity that we see from last year. We are not at a place yet where we feel intense concern around these numbers. Again, these students are experiencing a level of rigor that they have not or may not have experienced prior to coming into this grade level appropriate college prep classroom.
Pause for slide.
When we look at our ninth grade freshman lit in composition, though, we do see that while all the criteria that I described earlier are still true for freshman-litened composition, our grade distribution is more aligned to what we saw in 2023, 2020, 2023, 2024 and 2024, 2025. The shift to the heterogeneous class setting here, we see that our students are achieving at similar levels as what they had, what we had seen in the past.
Pause for slide.
And likewise in biology, we see almost identical grade distribution from our Quarter 1 grades in last year to our Quarter 1 grades this year. So even though we have removed team-taught sections for all Biology courses, Algebra I courses and English I courses, and expose these students to a higher level of rigor in the curriculum, overall, our students are experiencing success. We did not include social studies data here because we did not have team-taught social studies last year.
Pause for slide.
And so when we look at those numbers, and I talked about the need for additional support and we're not at a level where we have demonstrated extreme concern. And it's because of the ninth grade connections that we have created with our labs. As we created the heterogeneous model, we expected that we would need to offer additional support for students. And our ninth grade lab model is a tier-two intervention designed to provide help to students experiencing difficulty in the college prep classes. Our team teachers, our our course team teachers are identifying students who need additional support and are working with our lab coordinators to ensure that students are getting enrolled in our tier-two intervention of the lab, of the ninth grade lab, which provides students with one-on-one or small group support with a tutor. And so here are the number of students who have been connected to the lab so far this year.
Yes, and Don, one of the questions that I know you asked was just more anecdotally, how's it going? So at this point, you know, when we look at our ninth grade heterogeneous classes, overall, it's going well. We are concerned about the fact that we do see more students kind of in that C and D range. And so what we've been doing there is really working hard with our our teachers in the courses on the labs. And so the first quarter of the school year was really fine tuning those labs and saying, in the instructional cycles that teachers are making, when do we do these interim assessments and when are we referring and connecting students to the lab supports? And so, you know, we have teacher liaisons in those positions connecting to the course teams and it's taking us a little bit of time to kind of fine tune that. But we're starting to find our groove with that. And we're optimistic and we're confident that with better connections with our labs, those student grades are going to start to increase. One of the benefits of the lab model is that when the the ESP is not working with the students in a remediation standpoint, we've been pushing them into the classrooms. So we've been supporting teachers that way by having the ESP go into the classrooms. This has been beneficial because it helps the kids in the class see that teacher aide as a person representing that course. So when they go into the lab, they know exactly who they're looking for. It's also been good because it's helped our lab aides meet all of the teachers in the course and develop a familiarity with how they teach, what they're asking students to do. So for example, our Bio Bio aides have been going into the biology classrooms, watching the teachers do the labs so that they can help explain that to students who may be connected to the labs afterwards. One of the things we wanted to do to support the teachers in those classes, this is definitely a challenge for them as a new curriculum with a broader bandwidth of students. We've been offering them curriculum release days where if they need a half day or a full day to align their assessments, to review student work, to align kind of the operations of their labs, they have the time to do that. Some of the course teams have taken us up on that. Others are kind of still packaging what they would do on that day, but they know that that offer is there for them.
Don Carmichael.
Okay.
It's not always easy for teachers to do that, but I strongly support it. And I think that's a great use of time.
Yeah, and we, you know, our department chairs, our assistant principals, teaching and learning, Mr. Varn, are, we're constantly checking in with those teams, saying what resources are needed. One of the challenges we faced is that the labs are during the lunch period and it's new for freshmen. So sometimes we connect a student, but then we have to track them down because they forget to attend during lunch or lunch might be just more fun at that point in time than going to a check-in period. But for the most part, kids are showing up and doing what they need to do. But that that is a challenge that we're working through. I'll move quickly through this one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It sounds like you are taking some steps to fine tune and start kind of going back to similar grades. So do you have a metric in mind to say the changes you're making, what does what does good look like there, what does improvement look like versus what? How do you determine that those are working versus versus not and when?
Yeah, I think I think what we believe good would be, would be very similar grade distributions to last year because that would be tremendous for us because we believe we've increased the rigor for all students in that course. And if we're seeing similar grade distributions, it means that the supports we put in place, remember last year, the supports were two teachers working together to support only about 20 students. Now what we've done is redesign that so all students in Algebra I, all students in Bio and all students in English Lit and Comp have access to those supports when they need them. So if we're able to see student grades getting near that same level, and right now, we should honestly, right now, we're ecstatic with our students and our teachers because when you look at it, in Biology, we have 75% of our students are getting an A and a B, right? So 75% of the kids are getting an A and a B, the remaining 25%, with the vast majority of those being Cs. So we're still seeing excellent work from the kids. We want to eliminate and get more of those kids into the AB range and we want to get them out of that that D and F range, obviously. So shrinking that gap will be success for us and moving more kids into the A and B will will be something we'll be monitoring closely.
Just as a reminder.
Yep.
Don Carmichael.
In the 1990s, a lot of schools in the area decided to remove the entrance requirements for students going to AP classes.
That's correct.
As a result, students who might not have been chosen to go into an AP class but wanted to, started taking those classes.
That is correct.
The results were that the grades went down. As a teacher of one of those classes, I was delighted. And the reason why is because we were reaching more students.
Yep.
The students who were doing well were still doing well.
Right.
And we were now serving a different population. So when I saw that data at first, I'm like, oof. But I had to put it back into context of understanding what the structure of those classes are. The fact that we are going after that 25% that are struggling, I think that's, that's great. And you still have teachers that are attending to the kids that are at the top.
Yes.
So I don't want us to be too freaked out about that grade distribution. I think that we thought that was coming.
Yes.
We anticipated this to occur.
Yes, because we have greater access to rigor, both at the honors level in AP where there are more students in those courses and in our college prep. And you'll see that the data kind of bears that out. The other interesting thing is in the research I've done, a lot of students will experience their first semester of their diagonal move. They will tend to drop a grade level from their previous grades. And that's because it's an exponential jump to go from one level to the next. Just everything about the course is is different. The expectations, the pacing, the way kids and staff, students and teachers talk to each other, the assessments. And so what we find, though, is that the kids who stay in their class tend to, in their second semester, go back up to the grades that they had before making that move. It kind of takes students a semester sometimes to really get their sea legs under them, so to speak. So I believe this dip that we're seeing first semester will kind of rise back up to what we're seeing second semester from the students. But even the dip that we're seeing, as you see in this next slide, I think are minimal. So this is all freshmen. This shows the freshmen who are in our college prep and in honors level courses. Last year, 86% of students at this time had an A or a B. This year, it's 81%. So we're seeing fewer As, our Bs have increased and we're seeing a little bit more in the C range. The Ds and Fs are very similar. Moving along to.
Tom, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Thank you. So for those freshmen who leveled up based on our, well, based on recommendations, are you find, are there supports that, I mean, I see that we don't talk about what those supports look like for those that are in Biology. Is it coming?
Yep.
Sorry.
It's coming, thank you, though. Because we did want to support students across the curriculum. So this shows all student grades, ninth grade through 12th grade. And remember, this is district. So across our district, in 23, 24, 87% of our students had A and B or 80% of our, 87% of our grades were As and Bs. This year, it's 85%. And so the numbers of Cs, Ds and Fs right now has increased 2% points, but very, very similar. And remember, we're not comparing the same students, right? We have all new students coming in. We have new variables in place. So it's very difficult to, like, this really isn't apples to apples. But one cohort of students last year to this year, we're seeing very similar results.
Pause for slide.
We want to talk briefly about our diagonal movers. I'll just explain this first chart and then I'll move quickly through the others. So on the left, you see two bars there. The first bar is the diagonal movers. So these are students who would have been in a lower level course last year level course last year, and then were moving to a higher level course, say in honors or an AP course. So last year, our diagonal movers, we saw a lot of As and Bs, which makes sense, because last year, what we were saying was, hey, you're a student who's demonstrating success in a, in a lower level class. We think you can move to an upper level course. And they were taking that recommendation, and they were doing very well compared to non diagonal moving peers, which is the second bar. This year, what we see is our diagonal movers are more reflective of our population as a whole, meaning that our diagonal movers are, are doing well, but there's more Cs this year and Ds than there are, than there were last year. The amount of As has decreased tremendously. And we do believe that that is likely because so many students were diagonally moving into courses that we weren't necessarily recommending, but because they tested at meets or exceeds, they were taking that automatic acceleration. These are not bad grade distributions at all. We still see 86% of them with As and Bs, but we do see a broader range of performance than we did in our diagonal movers last year. The data in English is less, uh, there's a smaller spread than there was in math. The data from last year to this year is very similar, and science is in the same, which is basically telling us that in math, math and science tend to be the hardest class, subject areas for students to diagonal move in on the whole, and English a little bit less.
Pause for slide.
Okay. Larry, do you want to speak to the, the EOS students?
And so diving a little deeper into our diagonal movers, one category of diagonal mover that we were intentional about last year recruiting and out, and having outreach to, was our underrepresented students based on race and, and income. And so we identified students who had similar or comparable GPAs, SAT scores, had been recommended by staff members, and also met the academic profile of the AP student, but they had not taken an AP class, and they, and they were categorized as meeting our underrepresented student piece. Here's the grade distribution for those students who were added into AP courses last year through our initiative of targeted outreach for these students. And what we find is that when given an opportunity, when encouraged by a trusted adult, when placed in an environment that promotes belief in their potential and provides a sense of belonging, and when provided effective high quality instruction by our staff, when I, and when we have opportunities for support for these students, that underrepresented students can and will perform at high levels. So this grade distribution is an indicator of the correct identification that our schools went through in terms of finding underrepresented students who would, had the potential to do well in an AP class.
Lisa Hessel.
Mr. Varne, is it, is it not possible to have a similar graph to show what the EOS students' grade distributions were last school year compared to this school year?
We did not have EOS students last year. This is the first, last year was our outreach year. That was the first year of the partnership. So this year would be the first time that those students that we reached out to last year actually enrolled in an AP class. In years going forward, we can, but this is the first cohort of EOS students.
Sure. But they were our students previously.
Larry Varne.
They were our students previously, but they were, what you saw is a distribution of their grade in an AP class. This is their first AP class.
But you're asking to see their grades last year when they weren't in an AP class?
Similar to the graphs on the previous slides.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
More of a cohort-based comparison versus a class-based comparison.
Right. To your point, Kara, about supports, one of the ways we're supporting students who are in honors classes or AP, or just really any other beyond the college, the ninth grade college prep is through our extension lab. So we do have some extension lab data that's starting to come in. These are the positions that are staffed by our teachers before school through stipends. What we're seeing here is that students are beginning to be connected to these. And there is one typo, the English data for Vernon Hills, in the month of October, that's not one, that's supposed to be 21, students were connected and attended, and 21 students did not attend. So they, 42 students were connected, 21 attended. So we are seeing, especially at Vernon Hills, a little bit lower of a connection rate. This is because this intervention is before school. Transportation may be an issue. We're starting to take a look at if we have students in need of support, and the before school is not working for them, would we be able to potentially create this type of support during lunch periods? And would we be able to reach the students who we cannot reach before school with that? So the team in the extension lab has been keeping data. We also, to be responsive to our teachers, we felt we saw data that we had a large need for social studies support. And through you as a board, you gave us the resources we needed to add a social studies position each morning to the lab. One other problem with the extension lab is that we don't always have the subject that the student needs every day of the week. So because teachers are sharing some of those responsibilities, you might only have chemistry one day a week at LHS and two days a week at Vernon Hills. And if a student can't attend that particular day, they're not able to get that subject area. So the extension lab is working, but we are seeing some limitations to it and thinking about ways that we may need to improve that service moving forward.
Pause for slide.
We also added just.
The extension lab is not so much the, an identified intervention, it's more, it's a, I mean, it's an extension of kind of the drop-in and the ARC if the student is.
It's, it's meant to be a tier two.
Okay.
Because the departments, each department got to work with their staff to say, what are the courses that need the support? Where do we, we started with which courses have the largest amount of diagonal movers, but it was a department decision about, hey, we're seeing kids like at Vernon Hills High School, AP Psychology was a course with a lot of diagonal movers this year. And you'll see in the data that they are connecting students to the extension lab to help students develop grade level proficiencies in like their certain core skills, right? So it is intended to be more.
So they are being identified.
Small group identified students moving through a cycle. But yeah, it is not as robust as a ninth grade lab. So, okay. We also added an executive function support as a tier two. So at LHS, we have a full-time executive function coach, and at Vernon Hills, a full-time executive function coach. Over these first couple of weeks of school, 19 students have been connected with the LHS person, 21 at Vernon Hills. This is really important because prior to this year, we didn't have this. Those kids would have been, been recommended to be put into pause, thus raising our pause numbers and assigning those students a class every single day for executive function. What we're able to do right now is put this tier two in place to see if the students can be supported through the executive function coach, so that they're not assigned a pause position.
Momentary pause.
So it's just kind of an example of how our MTSS pyramid is taking place and operating. Very quickly, as a tier one, just to show you MASH drop-ins, we are monitoring this very closely. So we know which students are dropping into the MASH for what subjects and what times of day. So when our, if we're finding students needing support and our teachers needing more support for students, we'll know what subjects are being sought, and at what times of day students are available for those supports. We're doing the same thing at Vernon Hills with the ARC, keeping track of that. And a big shout out goes to Vernon Hills peer tutors. They have had 438 peer tutoring sessions. So that's 438 individual students meeting with a peer tutor since the start of the school year. This is fantastic because it means when kids at Vernon Hills have questions about curriculum, they're going to their peers to ask them for assistance and support, in addition to going to the ARC or to the labs when they're connected.
Pause for slide.
Uh, finally, some questions that came in over the weekend. So how does the level changes this year compare to last year? So this is LHS, all grade levels on the left. What we see is in 2023, 24, we had 23 level downs at this point in the year. This year, we're at 66, with the majority of those increases being in math and in social studies. So we are seeing more level downs this year, which again, we kind of predicted because we knew that we were diagonally moving more kids than we had before. The courses where we see the highest amount of level downs are listed on the right.
Pause for slide.
Three of them are high-level math classes, Geometry Honors, AP Precalc, AP Calc AB, AP Human Geo is there, and then Freshmen Lit and Comp Honors. We saw about a 20% increase in Freshmen Lit and Comp Honors, but only five of those students have had to level down. So all, all in all, we do see more level downs, but all of those students have been enrolled in college prep courses. They've all been accommodated, and we have space for two reasons. One, because we staffed in preparation for this last year, anticipating this. And two, over the spring, we actually added sections in key areas where we anticipated there would be more level downs than others. The data is very similar for Vernon Hills, except we see more level downs at Vernon Hills than we did at Libertyville. So Vernon Hills had 31 last year and 131 this year. Most of those increases we see were in math and in science. And you see the classes for Vernon Hills that were the highest impacted, most of them, math classes, Geometry Honors, AP Precalc, Algebra II Honors, and Algebra II. AP Language and Comp is a class that we're starting to hear from teachers is in need of support. That is a class that is very dependent on staff feedback and student writing. And so the Teaching and Learning Team at Vernon Hills High School is working with teachers there to try to get these students connected to the lab, and to see what supports we can put in place to help students maintain their success in that course. Finally, just want to show the course optimums. So there was concern that if a lot of students were leveling down, we weren't going to have space in our college prep classes. And what we see here is on the top, we have the 2024, 25 school year, the total sections over optimum at LHS, that's 44 sections out of 582, and this is across the entire school. That is 8%. That's less at LHS this year at this time than we were last year. So last year, first semester, we had 12% over optimum. This year, it's 8%. At Vernon Hills, it's very similar. We had 11% over optimum last year, but this year, even with all of the level downs, we're only at 7% over optimum. So we feel that our proactive staffing that we did last year, the resources you provided as a board gave us the space to have room for students who needed to level down and to find spots in college prep courses. Okay?
Momentary pause.
That was a long report. I appreciate your patience, but I believe we may want to ask a few questions.
Don Carmichael.
So as we approach next year's sectioning, we have a better idea of how to go about assigning students into those sections. We also should have a better idea how to section the classes.
Momentary pause.
Like knowing how many students we should anticipate and have an idea. Like I would think that our goal is to reduce the number of students that are leveling down.
Dr. John Gilleyam.
Yeah, our goal would be to get back to years gone by with very few level downs because parents and families have more and better information to make those choices about courses.
And we'll be better at, without changing the intent of the Accelerated Placement Act, we'll be better at being able to help parents and students make those decisions about where they should land.
Yes. We heard very much some of the feedback from last year. Our teams, Teaching and Learning, administrative teams here are working with Student Services to say, what are the changes we're going to make this year to eliminate some of the confusion and the, some of the problems we had last year, to provide families with more information on the front end, so that the placement decisions they're making for their students are ones that they believe their students will be successful in, and should give us a better kind of more accurate sense of what our students need in terms of support. We don't want students to have to level down because that can be disruptive to their schedules.
True.
So even though we have the space for them, it's still not ideal for a student to have to level down. And so we want the placement process on the front end to be as accurate as possible to minimize those numbers.
Sunal Kulkarni.
One metric that might be useful in the future is this, the earlier slides show how many students leveled down. But do you also know how many asked for it versus how many got it? Because there, I know leveling down is not easy. It could mess with your entire schedule based on.
Right.
Which class you're talking about.
Yeah, that I, that's a little bit tricky for us to measure in terms of students requesting because it's just sometimes hard to make sure that we've captured all of those requests. But the students this year, like what Andy Young and Jenny Getch have said, and the principals will confirm, is that all of the students who, who needed to level down this year, leveled down. There were some students who maybe started the process and then found, whoa, I would have to drop this course, I would have to drop this, and then decided not to. And they might have, feel like, I wish I could have leveled down, but I wasn't able to. But it would be largely because, not because there wasn't room, but because some of the choices that needed to be made in that were ones that were not satisfactory. So it's a tricky thing to measure, but I understand your, your question of, are we able to meet the requests to level down? What's the percentage of kids that want to level down and are not able to?
I think, I mean, this question came to me as Don was saying, so even more preparation for when kids are signing up for classes, that they make the right decision upfront because it gets harder, you know, once that thing is signed and sealed. So that's all.
I think, I think one thing that is worth mentioning too, is when you look at, when you look at some of these courses, many of these courses that are over optimum, you might have a tendency to think those are, those are courses where students leveled down. And there are enough of those that brought those, those seats to a full capacity or over optimum. It's actually surprisingly, the number of courses that are the diagonal course, which is a testament to our teachers. And I think Mr. Karstadt spoke to this last month when he talked about, we have labs, you know, we have the drop-in arcs, we have peer tutors, but one thing that doesn't get mentioned is the countless number of hours the teachers are pouring into this. And they didn't start the year with the expectation of losing a bunch of kids. They started the year with the expectations of keeping all of those kids in. And in fact, many of those courses, while you might think, well, there's a lot of levels down, to me personally, there's not nearly as many as I thought there was going to be. And I think that's a testament to the teachers and their hard work to keep the kids in the diagonal class, which then has left some of those classes over optimum. So again, not another, not, not a perfect scenario, but one that I think is, points to the professionalism of our teachers and something that I really appreciate.
Yeah. And one mistake we made was we used some early language when we were working with our teachers about, we asked them, you know, connect a student to the lab when we exhaust tier one. And so actually, what a lot of teachers were doing was really not referring students to the labs because they said, well, there's more I can do with them before I connect them. So we're, we're, we're recognizing that we maybe unintentionally set the bar too high. And we want teachers to feel that they can connect kids to the labs because, especially the extension labs, because those resources are there to support the student and help the teacher not feel that it's all on them. And so that was some feedback that we got, that we recognized administratively, we needed to really revise that language, not make it about exhausting tier one, but attempting tier one strategies. Once some of those are not successful, let's get the student connected to the lab as a way to support not only the child, but the staff member.
Kara Benjamin.
I have a quick question. I didn't see this number in the presentation, but it may have been embedded somewhere and I just didn't notice. But I'm looking for the total number of ninth grade diagonal movers at LHS, and the total number of ninth grade diagonal movers at Vernon Hills, because we have the number of level downs, which doesn't necessarily represent the number of diagonal movers, if that makes sense, right? A kid could have been recommended for two higher level courses and they leveled down one of them. So that only accounts for one level down versus two. I'm just curious kind of what the overall percentage was of, of kids who were recommended to. I'm just curious kind of what the overall percentage was of, of kids who were recommended to diagonally move or took the diagonally, uh, the diagonal move recommendation and those that ended up.
It's a little, um, I can work on that. It's a little tricky because ninth graders, it's hard to classify them as a diagonal mover because they weren't in our system last year. Um, so the tricky part there is we, we would need to look at students who typically may not have been in, in like a, a, but we've been open enrollment. So it's hard to say exactly which student was not necessarily our typical student who is in an honors class. Um, but I can show the number, what we can show is the number of students who were in those courses and how many actually leveled down. Um, but it's hard to label them as a diagonal mover or not because they're just not new to our system.
Okay.
Kara Drumkey.
Uh, thank you for all of this. I, I know we updated this, uh, we updated the presentation today. And I have to say, when I read it through over the weekend, when it was just raw numbers, it seemed more alarming to me than when we transferred this to percent, even though I can figure out percentages on the graph, but it just, the raw numbers seemed alarming to me. Um, so I appreciate seeing it in both ways. And I guess my only question is, eh, now that you've lived it for two and a half months, uh, and I thank you for thinking about what are the recommendations that we are making moving forward to make this work? I mean, are you feeling that the system is, but my only concern is the system overburdened? Is, do you have the support that you need? Is there more that we need to be, uh, offering? And you know, that, that's, I think everybody's perception here is what do you need from the board? Because when I saw the raw figures, the raw scores, it seemed to me that the system was being taxed and burdened. But when I look at the percentages, it's a little bit more aligned, uh, aligned with where we've been historically. So I dropped that question like, and, and I know this isn't anything you can answer today, but starting to think about where do we move forward to support teachers and the support for the students?
Well, I definitely think the teachers are feeling the, the work increase of having so many diagonal movers in their, across the curriculum in their classes. Um, and so what we've been, um, attempting to do is we've been attempting to be very nimble with our interventions to say, let's keep iterating, um, with the resources we have. If they're not being used in a way that is actually supporting you effectively, what might the changes we make to those be? So that we are, because the goal is to support the students and the teachers. So if the original design of the intervention was intended to do that, but is not having that impact, let's not wait till next year. Let's make some of those adjustments now. Um, and so I, I think right now our staff and administrative staff and, and teaching staff feel like we have resources. If those resources are not being as effective as we could use them, we're going to make those adjustments. But you've been very clear as a board that if we determine more resources are needed, that you want to, you expect to hear from us about what those are and how those would look. Um, so that continues to be a question that we continue to monitor.
Anybody else? Thank you. That was a lot of information that, um, it, it did make it much clearer when, when I saw these, uh, these updated charts. And I appreciate, uh, your efforts on that. So thank you very much. Was there any other on your report? Okay, so we will move on, uh, board comments and events. I'll just start with a few things. One is, um, attended a, um, the, um, IASB Lakes Division, uh, meeting, dinner meeting, um, earlier in the month. Uh, it was very well attended. I thought it was, uh, a great, uh, event. Uh, just a couple of quick comments on that. It was hosted by Highland Middle School, by the way. So our district, seventy folks were, were able to accommodate, uh, many educators and board members from around the, uh, the county. And, um, it was a, a new format, uh, legislative roundtable, if you will, where we had a brief meeting up front and then broke up into groups and had small, uh, actually pairs of legislators talking about different topics of importance to board members and administrators and school districts. And, uh, I thought that was a, a really interesting way of, of handling that process. So, um, that was a great event. I also attended the, uh, kickoff luncheon for Ed Redd and I'm looking over here at Lisa as one of the board members of that organization. It's a education, uh, support, education advocacy program, uh, organization. And, uh, I know Midlesh was, uh, uh, there attending with me. It was a very interesting, um, lots of dialogue with, uh, legislators again, uh, which is, uh, their primary, primary purpose, uh, a good, um, keynote speaker. And I, I won't take any, uh, thunder away from Lisa if she wants to expound on any of that. But I was impressed by the, uh, the new, um, uh, strategic plan that they have come up with, uh, for that organization. And I would be remiss in, my third, uh, item that I attended was the, uh, student rep lunch, uh, a week ago. It was, uh, pretty nice to meet with all of you, uh, over a quick bite at, over lunch and hear some stories. I didn't get to talk to as many of you directly as I could because the table, there was a lot of people at the table. So, uh, maybe at a future one, I will, uh, be able to do that. I will also mention that that opportunity is open to other board members. And we had a schedule and a Lisa put it out, uh, earlier in the year. So, uh, just as a reminder, I will send that out again. I'll send out a reminder. Um, I'm, don't believe I'm able to attend the November, uh, meeting, which is actually coming up pretty quick. So if others are interested and/or want to join us at any of the upcoming ones for the, the remainder of the, the, uh, the next few months, uh, feel free to include that. So I'll open it up to anyone else that wants to comment on any events, uh, or, uh, comments you have.
Pause for discussion and questions.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. I guess I'm the only one going with one. Uh, IASB report, um, well, we do have, uh, the, the main state conference for the IASB coming up, uh, in November. So just as a reminder for that, we'll have some opportunity to talk about some items next week, actually, at our, uh, PMP committee meeting, um, related to, um, supporting that process.
Looking over the resolutions.
Yep, looking over the resolutions. So, and nothing from CDAL. Uh, so we have a list of future agenda items, uh, on the list there. We heard a few comments about some of those things coming up tonight, the tax levy, information, that kind of thing. Anyone else have any comments on the future agenda items?
At some point, I would like to revisit what's, uh, what our plan is with installing solar. So I would like to get back to the prospect of investigating or have a call for RFPs. Uh, a request for proposal, I'm not exactly sure how that works, but if we had a few companies come and present to us the same way that we had the superintendent search firms come and talk to us, I would entertain that. I don't know how to do it though. So I'm looking for an agenda item where we can discuss that.
Momentary pause.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to, um, we have a, um, executive session coming up. So I need a motion to convene into closed session to discuss collective bargaining, collective negotiating matters. Uh, five ILCS one twenty slash two C two and employment of employees, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
Hessel, so moved.
Good to all second.
Uh, roll call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin. Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into closed session. There will not be any action taken after this. So I wish everyone a good evening.
Fade to District one hundred twenty-eight logo. Text on the screen says, the board is in closed session. Fade into board members seated at table.
We live? All right. Uh, can I have a motion in a second to return to open session?
So moved. Hessel.
Carmichael, second.
This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
Carmichael moved to adjourn.
Drumkey, second.
A voice vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Heating is done.
Fade to District one hundred twenty-eight logo. End of meeting.